Good evening. We thank you all for being here tonight. And if you can find your way to your seat, I think it's about that time. About time to get started. Again, we thank you so much for being here for this very special evening. We're going to begin our ceremony with the presentation of the colors. So if you would please stand and remain standing for both the presentation of the colors and then the singing of the National Anthem by the Frost Middle School Advanced Women's Chorus under the direction of Meredith Lee. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Forward, march! Please join me again in thanking the Frost Middle School Advanced Women's Chorus and their director, Meredith Lee, for their performance tonight. Thank you all. And I also want to thank Cadet Alicia Cho, Cadet John Ramirez, Cadet Ernie Lee, and Cadet Lauren Rida, Reda, excuse me, Reda, with the Chantilly Academy Air Force JROTC for the presentation of the colors. Thank you very much. You may be seated. There are so many reasons for us to be proud of our wonderful students in this system, certainly tonight, the Frost Middle School Choir, and then certainly the students at Chantilly. But as you walk through this evening, you probably also heard from some very talented Langley High School Chamber Ensemble students under the direction of Scott McCormick. If you please join me in thanking them. And then later, for the entertainment at this evening's reception, will be pianist Theron Masters, also from Langley High School. So again, congratulations. We have so many talented students. This time, I'd like to recognize some of our attendees. And first of all, I want to thank the family members who came out to support their special school board member. So I'd like all the family members to please stand. I didn't get to introduce myself or meet every single one of you, but we look forward to working with you. Please stand so we can acknowledge you. Thank you. For those of you that are family members of current school board members, and those of you I know that know this to be true, and that is, it really takes the support of a family to do this kind of work. And so we want to thank you for your support over the past years and for the families that are new to this experience. We thank you for your support because it will be critical as they serve in the board in the coming years. I'd also like to acknowledge members of the leadership team who are with us here tonight. I won't introduce each of them individually, but I'd like for them to please stand so we can acknowledge their leadership. Each member of this leadership team works very closely with the school board, and we see ourselves as one team, working hard to move our school system forward and to serve each of the 185,000 students that we serve in the very best way that we possibly can. We also have a couple of special guests. We have a former school board member, Phil Najelski-Eigner, and I apologize, Phil, I knew I was going to mess that up. I visited with him just a few minutes ago. There he is. Phil, thank you for being here tonight. And then we have Delegate Marcus Simon, who was here. We thank you for being here. Delegate Simon's a busy man. I've seen him at lots of meetings lately, so I know you're getting ready for the upcoming session, so we thank you, sir, for your service as well. The education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built and sustained. Locally-elected school board members play an instrumental role in our communities, for they are charged with the governance of our public school systems. Our young people and our public schools are our community's most precious resource, so with the stewardship of our great schools is so important. We're very grateful for each of the public servants who will be sworn in this evening and for their willingness to serve in this important role. This evening, the newly-elected Fairfax County School Board will take the oath of office one member at a time. The oath will be administered by Fairfax County Circuit Court Judge Bruce D. White, who is seated right here, and I know he wanted to make just a couple of brief comments tonight. We do thank him for being here tonight. Please, please help me welcome Judge White.
Thank you. I'm the chief judge of the Fairfax Circuit Court, and the Fairfax Circuit Court is the largest circuit court in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And one of the things that the chief judge gets to do is he sets the docket every day. He tells the other judges what cases they handle. And the judge also gets to decide events like this, ceremonial events, who goes and who doesn't. And you might know that tonight, the Board of Supervisors is being sworn in, and the chief judge is here and not there. There's a lot of reasons for that, but one of the small reasons for that is that I haven't been back in this building since 1966, when I used to play basketball for a boys' club in the gym around the corner. I thought one of the things you all might like to know, because we like to see that our work has produced fruit, is that on the circuit court right now, we have three judges who graduated from Annandale High School. We have one judge that graduated from Oakton. The Commonwealth's attorney for the county graduated from West Springfield, and the clerk of court, John Fry, graduated from West Springfield High School. That's pretty good. I left one out. Justice Roush of the Virginia Supreme Court graduated from Oakton High School. So when you think about, are you doing any good? Is anything happening good from your work? Think about those folks and think about Justice Roush, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge White, and we thank, we're so pleased that you chose us, and we're very proud that you're a graduate of Fairfax County Public Schools. We will now begin the swearing-in ceremonies, and we're very excited to begin this process in this evening's ceremony with Jeanette Huff.
Would you repeat after me? I, Jeanette Huff...
I, Jeanette Huff.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the at-large member...
As the at-large member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Huff. Now she is assigning the official documents over there. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Mr. Ryan McElveen.
Would you raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I, Ryan McElveen...
I, Ryan McElveen.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the at-large member...
As an at-large member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. McElveen. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Mr. Ilion Moon.
Would you raise your hand? I, Iroongi Moon...
I, Ilion Moon.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge...
Discharge.
All of the duties incumbent upon me...
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As the at-large member...
As the at-large member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Moon. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Ms. Megan McLaughlin.
Would you repeat after me? I, Megan McLaughlin...
I, Megan McLaughlin.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all of the duties...
Discharge all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the Braddock District Member...
As the Braddock District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. McLaughlin. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Ms. Janie Strauss.
Would you repeat after me? I, Jane K. Strauss...
I, Jane K. Strauss.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all of the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the Drainsville District Member...
As the Drainsville District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ms. Strauss. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Ms. Pat Hines.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Patricia M. Hines...
I, Patricia M. Hines.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all of the duties...
Discharge all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the Hunter Mill District Member...
As the Hunter Mill District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Hines. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Ms. Tammy Deronak-Kofax.
Would you raise your right hand? I, Tamara Deronak-Kofax...
I, Tamara Deronak-Kofax.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all of the duties...
Discharge all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the Lee District Member...
As the Lee District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Deronak-Kofax. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Ms. Sandy Evans.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Sandra S. Evans...
I, Sandra S. Evans.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all of the duties...
Discharge all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the Mason District Member...
As the Mason District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax, I'm sorry, to the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Evans. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Mrs. Karen Corbett-Sanders.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Karen L. Corbett-Sanders...
I, Karen L. Corbett-Sanders.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all of the duties...
Discharge all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the Mount Vernon District Member...
As the Mount Vernon District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Corbett-Sanders. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Ms. Dahlia Palchik.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Dahlia A. Palchik...
I, Dahlia A. Palchik.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the Providence District Member...
As the Providence District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Palchik. Now we'll have the swearing-in of Ms. Elizabeth Schultz.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Elizabeth L. Schultz...
I, Elizabeth L. Schultz.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all of the duties...
Discharge all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the Springfield District Member...
As the Springfield District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Schultz. And now we'll have the swearing-in of Mr. Tom Wilson.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Thomas A. Wilson... I, Thomas A. Wilson...
I, Thomas A. Wilson.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge all of the duties...
Discharge all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me...
Incumbent upon me.
As the Sully District Member...
As the Sully District Member.
To the Fairfax County School Board...
To the Fairfax County School Board.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Wilson. That completes our swearing-in ceremony. I understand Mr. Ted Velkoff is here. I did not see him earlier. Where is Ted? Is he still here? Oh, he just walked out. Well, I should have stopped in the middle, but forgive us, I did not know he was in the building at the event. We certainly want to recognize Ted Velkoff and his wonderful years of service. Again, I want to thank you all for being here for our wonderful celebration of these outstanding school board members and their service, their willingness to serve as public servants, and we're very, very happy and looking forward to working with them in the coming years. You are now invited to join us in the cafeteria for refreshments and fellowship. We're going to stay here just for a few minutes, the board members and their families. We're going to take a few pictures. You're welcome to stay and watch the picture-taking that we will do right now, but you're certainly welcome to go on to the cafeteria, and we'll join you just shortly. So again, thank you all for coming tonight for this very special evening. So thank you.